The City of Ocean Shores Planning Commission Meeting to order. It's 2:00 PM, we're in the Ocean Shores Library on Point Brown Avenue, Ocean Shores. First off, I'd like to welcome our new Commissioner, Steve Barry. Thank you. Glad to have you on board. We'll call Commissioner Barry here. Mr. Bees here, Mr. Barr.
Here.
Commissioner Wallace here. Unfortunately, Commissioner Ward is absent today. I'd like a motion to approve Commissioner Ward's absence.
Motion.
You have a second? All approved?
Aye.
Okay. I have approval of the minutes next. I'd like to make two changes to the previous minutes. If you look at it on page... Three. The minutes, the box at the top, it says Minutes Taken by Commissioner Wallace, and that should be Commissioner Ward. And then number nine on the minutes, it says Secretary for Next Meeting, it says Chair Steve Barry, Appointed Commissioner Barr as Secretary for Today's Meeting. That should read Chair Wallace Appointed Commissioner Barry as Secretary for Today's Meeting. And with that, may I have a motion to approve the minutes with the two changes noted?
Motion.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now's the time for public comments. Do we have any public comments in the room, please? Any comments today? No? Okay. Any comments from afar, please? Yes, Vida?
Hi, Mark.
All right, before we even start, thank you so much for the good information.
You're welcome. Uh, thank you for having me. I'm gonna reserve my comments for the public hearing regarding the Moore case. Uh, I don't really have anything on your other items of the agenda. I haven't really looked. I've been focusing on the the hearings that are coming up, so if I have any other comments, I'll get back to you. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Anyone else from far? No comments at the moment? Okay. Fun. So we will move forward. I would like to recess the regular planning commission meeting at 2:03 PM and convene into a public hearing. This public hearing before the City Council of Ocean Shores, it's also here in the planning commission before going to the City Council of Ocean Shores to hear public testimony for against the application to rezone of certain real property in Ocean Shores from PR1, Private Recreational, to R1 Residential Zone. This will be presented by our city planner, Marshall Reed. Marshall?
All right, thank you. So, as Commissioner Wallace stated, we are entering into a hearing to go through the staff report and hear public comments and allow the applicant an opportunity to express his intent in regards to the zoning change. So this is rezone 24-00001. The date submitted was March 8, 2024. We produced the staff report in March 26 of '24, and it was revised again on April 9 based on some public comments, so we got those changed for this hearing. Just a little background, the hearing was originally scheduled for the last planning commission hearing, and due to a lack of a forum, we had to postpone this hearing and renotice it for today. The application is for a zoning change from Private Recreational PR1 to Residential PR, excuse me, Residential R1 Zone, which would allow the construction of a single-family residence. The applicant is Jan Moore residing at 171 Helm Street Northwest in Ocean Shores, Washington. The project name has been given designation Jan Moore. The parcel number of the subject is 0921-00047802, and that's Division 10, Tax Lot 2, Track H. The physical address on this parcel is 694 Point Brown Avenue Southeast. The existing conditions of this parcel is zoning PR1, land use, parks and recreation, and it is in the shoreline jurisdiction. The surrounding properties are, there's only one property that abuts this property, and it's Zone R1. To the north, that is that property. To the south, on the other side of the canal, we have an R4 fourplex zone property. To the east, we have the Grand Canal with the other side of that being R1 Zones. To the west, there's an R4 zone piece of property. The land use designations in those quadrants, to the north, single-family; to the south, on the other side of the canal, is moderate density; to the east, we have the Grand Canal; to the west, another moderate density zone lot. The existing land uses surrounding this proposal, to the north, we have a single-family residence; to the south, across the canal, is a single-family residence; to the east, we have the Grand Canal with various single-family residential developments; and to the west, we have a single-family residence vacant undeveloped land. The background on this parcel, the subject property addressed 694 Point Brown Avenue Southeast is located in the southeast corner of Ocean Shores. The closest intersecting road, Point Brown Avenue, at 130 feet northwest. The property is zone Private Recreational, is surrounded, and is surrounded by residential zoning. The zoning in the immediate vicinity is a mixture of moderate and single families, single-family zoning. Notices were sent out for the rezone scheduled for April 9, 2024, and as I said, the public hearing was delayed due to lack of a forum and rescheduled for today. The staff has determined that this proposed development would not be permitted in the in the private recreational zone. In order to develop a single-family residence in this parcel, you would have to have a minimum R1 Zone, and that would be required as a minimum wherein a single-family residence would be a permitted use defined under Ocean Shores Municipal Code 1716020A, and those are listed permitted uses. Standard of review for the proposal, the proposal was reviewed against 173810, uses of the private recreational zone, and 1716020 permitted uses of the R1 Zone. The project may be allowed in an R1 Zone under Ocean Shores Municipal Code 1716020A, single-family residence. The development would be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district and would not adversely affect other uses or properties in the immediate vicinity. The district is intended, meaning the surrounding district, is intended for low-density detached single-family dwellings in order to assure the maximum of light, open airspace, privacy, and the protection of property values, and other allows, other uses should only be allowed if they are compatible with these values and consistent with the overall public interest, where the proposed use appears consistent with the purpose of that district. The proposed site plan should conform to all city standards. Approving the application would not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district. There's no indication that allowing a single-family residence in this zone would create any nuisance to life, limb, or property. The Moore project is currently located in a Parks and Rec District where a single-family residence is designated, would not be designated as a permitted use unless Zone R1, and then it would be legal under all applicable city development regulations and feasible based on the conditions of the parcel. The typical single-family residential site designed in Ocean Shores utilizes the majority of the parcel for structured parking and custom landscaping. This is in addition to the area required to construct a home, and the applicant will set aside portions of the parcel as natural areas. In this case, the shoreline master program designates a 10-foot vegetative buffer as a minimum, and then there's, in addition to the 10-foot buffer, there's a 25-foot structural setback. Should the planning commission recommend approval of this proposed rezone, changing the zone from Parks and Rec 1 to a R1 single-family residential, the following would be required: All future building plans and site design must meet the following current international fire code, current international building code, the City of Ocean Shores Municipal Code Type 17, and the shoreline master program, as well as all other applicable federal, state, and local laws, and that all utility construction would have to comply with the Ocean Shores Code standards. The applicant must comply with all City of Ocean Shores inspection requirements in addition. And that's the staff report. I would like to give the applicant an opportunity to add anything if, being as we've got you in the room today.
Uh, thank you. Everything you said complies pretty much with what I was thinking and and what I plan on planning to do, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have anything else to add. Like to open this up to...
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I do, I just wanted to clarify that the rezoning PR1 to R1 doesn't preclude not following any of the regulations that would be around any other normal R1 within the they would still have to adhere, as you said, to the setbacks and everything else required, so the zoning change here is basically just the first step to go forward to look and see if the rest of it is even feasible or possible, if that's correct.
Yeah, that would be correct.
Um, yeah, I have but I had a concern, I had to stop either and walk the site on my way here. I had a concern about access. The drawing would imply that the property was gonna access through the adjoining north property, which would require an easement. I'm assuming, I went out there and looked at it, and I know we had talked about there's, that there was room to access it through the existing city property. My concern was, since there's quite a slope increase where that bridge is, whether there would be room to fit the driveway in without having to take substantial dirt out and get it in, and it looks like it's wide enough or close enough to be wide enough from the fence to where the slope begins to fit a driveway in there. And my other concern was, obviously, we're, the city's planning on putting a pedestrian and bike path in that area in the near future. I just wanted to make sure that any proposed driveway would not conflict with the path, being that they would be two separate drives, the driveway would be separate from the path and it wouldn't rely on the path to drive into the and it looks like there's enough room if the driveway is kept closest to the fence or to the east, that both the path, that it would be out of the line of the path and so I'm spiraling. Uh, there's any other, anybody else have any concern about that? Marshall, if you had any comments regarding?
Yeah, I did. That was, that was one of my, you know, biggest concerns, to make sure that there wouldn't be a conflict with utilities. Driveway and inspection kind of lined up with what you thought is, I do believe that it's probably not gonna be a straight-on access from Point Brown, but it will be a diagonal access across the driveway into the front of the property as opposed to having to obtain the easement from the property to the north, so based on the amount of room that's there, I believe that access is not gonna be a problem as it would pertain to the driveway.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it's not gonna conflict with any future plans the city has for the path going through there either.
Yeah, I don't believe it will. I believe that the path will wanna take the the course of the new bridge as opposed to the old bridge.
Okay.
That, that's yet to be determined, and I don't know if the city has plans to, you know, or if the project would have plans to put money into renovation of that bridge, but even at that, we've got several properties in different areas that have diagonal crossings to the existing pathway and and I'm sure if it could make something that would be compatible with.
But either the path, the bike path, the production path, if it were going to be attached to the newer bridge, then I guess that would be a problem, because it would be further away from that.
It should be moved.
I was assuming that the, it would be that old bridge would probably be reused for that purpose, that move it even further away from the property if it goes on. Now we have one question. Yeah, you're talking about single-family home there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Anything else, Marshall?
Uh, no, I'd like to open it up to those on, if they'd like to comment. Can we start out with Vida?
Hi, thanks, Marshall. One thing I would like to talk about is distinguishing various land use actions. In this case, it's a rezone, rezoning from PR1 to an R1, and I wanna distinguish that land use action from a shoreline variance, which actually would grant variations from the dimensional structure and setbacks in a parcel that is subject to the Shoreline Management Act, which of course this one is as well. Uh, the reason I'm bringing this up is because there's another action that's in the queue that's on the docket right now, and that is SVAR 23-001, I believe it's the Estrada case, which it doesn't apply here, it's analogous in that they both have special district zonings. In the case of the Moore, it's an R, it's a PR1, and in the case of Estrada, it's a PR2, which I would like to talk a little bit about what a special district is because I was enlightened by reading the code and learning about this myself. So I'd like to read into the record some additional comments that I made on this particular case. Uh, one thing I think that's important that the staff report omitted was a discussion on special districts, since the Moore case and the Estrada case are analogous with respect to their common special district designations, as I previously mentioned. The public may not be aware that special districts are created because of special circumstances relating to the land involved and, and/or because special care and review is required to protect the city, the integrity of the comprehensive plan, and the public health, safety, and welfare, and that's a direct quote from Ocean Shores Municipal Code, Chapter 1710.010. The public should also be aware that there is a particular procedure for submitting an application for the development within our special districts. Developments occurring in the open space, which I am considering as PR2, and I'll be discussing that under separate cover with you, Marshall, regarding that other case I mentioned, and also the Private Recreational District, which is the case before us today, and this is a quote from the code as well, shall be by permission of the City Council only. This is why I wanted to distinguish these land use procedures, because I think it's appropriate for the planning commission to hear this particular case and make its recommendation to council, because it's only council that can change that zoning. It isn't the planning commission, they can make a recommendation, but they can't do the approval, nor can the hearings examiner. So this is why, and I know I'm getting off topic because it has to do with the other case that I'll be commenting on at another time, but it, they're both analogous. So I think today's procedure is the correct way to do this rezone, and so let me continue. So if the application is approved, so that's the application for the rezone by the council or approved subject to conditions by the planning commission, the, the plan and any condition shall be forwarded to the City Council for consideration, and the rezone or grant of permission shall not become effective until 10 days following the approval by the City Council, and that's Ocean Shores Municipal Code 1710020. One of the things I'd like to ask the commission to do, and I've also asked council for tonight's meeting, because it's gonna be coming before the council tonight. I provide comments to council as well. I'm asking council to condition any development on this site outside of the zoning, so I'm assuming Mr. Moore is gonna wanna build a house and he's gonna be subject to the shoreline rules, et cetera. That any development on this property comply with Ecology's most recent version of the Western Washington Stormwater Manual, I'll be referring to that as the manual, and that's the 2019 version. The 2024 version is currently under review and is imminent to be passed, so there'll be new regulations that we're gonna have to learn, because soon the most recent one will be the 2024 version. The reason so here's the reasons why they need to comply with the 2019 Stormwater Manual and not the 2005 version that's currently in our code. There's a conflict in the code. The parcel, our subject parcel today is subject to the Shoreline Management Act and the City's 2024 Shoreline Management Plan Update. That was, became effective in February of 2024, which is prior to the application date. Marshall, you didn't mention when it was completed. I assume that was in April. Anyway, there are three direct quotes in the manual on pages 48, 99, and page 37, where it says, and I'll just read one of them on page 37, it says, "All development shall subject to the provisions of this appendix", and this is the SMP, the Shoreline Master Plan, "shall comply with the Stormwater Manual for Western Washington, the current edition, which is the 2019 edition, prepared by Ecology." Those other two sites that I mentioned on page 48 and 99 have the same exact language. They refer to the most current edition. The 2024 Shoreline Master Plan also supersedes our code, our municipal code, or you might say it governs in hierarchy, because that's state, essentially state law. So our code is out of step with our current Shoreline Master Plan. The other comment I have, similar to the gentleman on your, one of the commissioners mentioned, and I also mentioned this in my written comments, was the EMS access to this property. So access may be limited due to the undeveloped right-of-way that abuts the frontage of this property. Uh, my concern is where the EMS vehicle is gonna turn around. So, you know, that needs to be considered, and I would suggest that before any permits are issued, clearing and grading, or the applicant is vested in this process, that the planning commission or Mr. Marshall, run it by the fire marshal and make sure that they're okay with access to this property as it's viewed right now. I sent you a picture of what the parcel looks like, and it's really clear that that bridge abutment is kind of in the way. I mean, there, you know, it can be worked out, and, and like Marshall said, you can have access because that's undeveloped right-of-way, it's not private property, and so that would be the normal access anyway. I think this project is doable, I support the project, but I'd like to see the conditions imposed upon it as I discussed during my comments. And that completes my testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vida. Don, would you like?
Yeah, could you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I was just gonna say that this topic is on tonight's council meeting agenda. There's a public hearing number eight on the council agenda, and there's an action item to adopt it on item number 10, so if the previous commenter had some comments, there may be some more things to do. But I just have a couple of questions of clarification. Maybe the planner can answer this. I, I see on page 13 of the agenda that that the lot size, it says it's 260 square feet, that must be a mistake. I, I don't know why it's there. Then below it, it says 2,615 square feet, so maybe that, that could be clarified. And, and over on page 15 of the agenda, the second paragraph down, it makes reference to a Parks and Recreational District, and, and Vida mentioned something about a district. Do we, do we have a Parks and Recreational District? I know it's PR zoning, Public Recreation zoning, but I've never heard of anything in Ocean Shores having a district called Parks and Recreational. As a district, as a, like a taxing district, so maybe that could be explained. And the paragraph that follows, it makes reference to the fact that that the let's see, let me, let me get my, let me get, let me just make, make sure I'm looking at the right thing. Yeah, in that same second paragraph, it says that the project is currently located in the Parks and Recreational District, and maybe you can explain that, where a, where a single-family residence is designated as a permitted use. It's not, there's no single-family residence designated in a, in the existing PR1. So I'm wondering what the intent there was, because if it was, you wouldn't have to have this zoning change. So is that just a mistake in the, in writing of the report? And I think that obviously the Shoreline Master Plan is responsible for this, but I also noticed there's, there's a very narrow lot on the south side of this property, and it's on, it borders the canal, the canal, where the canal goes, starts to go underneath the bridge. And, and my question there is, is that, is, that's a, that's a privately owned lot owned by somebody named Strong that lives in McClary, I looked it up. And is that, is that lot now totally lack of access? It's, it's very, very small. I, I'm not even sure if I even knew it was there, until I looked at the, the map sifter, sifter from the county county website, so is there any implication involving access to that property that's affected by, by this, this action? And here again, this is on the agenda tonight for a public hearing and and public discussion as an action item later on in the agenda, so it's on the agenda twice tonight, if anybody's interested. So maybe, Marshall, you could address some of my questions, and thanks a lot.
Yeah, um, thank you, Don. I, I would, if I could, address a couple of them, and you're correct in that there are a couple of titles within the staff report. The, the square footage of that lot is, is not 260 square feet as shown where Moore in line. I I didn't pick that up until late, and so I didn't bring the exact square footage, but it would be greater than 7,200 as far as overall build of the lot size. Uh, the other thing that you picked out in there that I noticed as I was reading through is that I did indicate that a single-family residence would be allowed in PR1, and that is not the case, and that's the purpose of the rezone. So I don't know if I was thinking faster than I was typing as this was going down, but that's, the entire purpose of the rezone is because a single-family residential development would not be allowed in a PR1. Uh, it would only be allowed in a residential one or higher. So you were correct in both of those, those catches. Thank you.
Uh, can I just add that? I forgot to say that I, I agree with this change. I think it's a, it's a useful change, and if you could address that, that sliver of property south of it.
Yeah, the, the sliver property, there's actually four of those on each corner, and they're, and they're actually located out in the water at this point. And I know one of the owners in the four corners of the bridge has filed to have storm drain fees removed because it's in the canal, and, and it would be improper to assess storm drain fees against a waterborne piece of property. Um, the other ones, there would be no access under no access change under this proposal as it stands, if this PR1 property is already owned by by a private individual. I looked back in the record to see if I could find when it changed. I'm assuming that at some point in this lot's history, it was either owned by the community club or was a part of the was a part of the, the flat. And some point prior in, in the history that I was able to find today, it changed hands from either the community club to a private individual. It changed hands from either the community club to a private individual. At that point, they probably should have made application for a rezone anyway. One of the other things that I did some research on today was the use of the parcel. I I think a lot of people kind of have the impression that if it's zoned private recreational, that you can't build any kind of a building on it. And I found that that was not the case in looking at the private recreational of the Ocean Shores Community Club. They've got huge structures on their property. So whether the property and the structure were. Were developed as a community type feature or whether it would be a single family residential type feature. It doesn't seem to have much difference in use or impact as far as the the shoreline would be concerned, so. We'll let the shoreline master program. Dictate the development as it moves forward. Hey, do we have any other comments? We have a G online, no name, just the letter G. Did you want to comment on this hearing? And you're on mute? I take that as a no. Jane Schadick, we have you in there. Would you like to comment this afternoon?
No comment. Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Yeah, with all the comments in, that'll conclude the hearing.
We'll close the public hearing in a reconvene. Commission meeting at. Two thirty. So commissioners, any further comments on this application before we. Put it to a vote?
Do we need to, I agree that this it needs to be, you know, this the shoreline management plan that. This all needs to be part of it. Are we voting on?
What we are voting on is whether we are free to pass forward to the city council to move move forward.
Correct. My assumption is this is just a zoning when we change it or. Vote to recommend changing it and the council does change it. That's just the beginning of the process. They still have to adhere to all other regulations, shoreline management, stormwater setbacks, everything else that would be required. When they win application for building permit, water, electrical and. Clearing rating.
Yeah, we would apply.
Go through that review, just like it would be for any other house that's being built along the canal or any other shoreline SMP type property.
That is the case, yes.
And and I think to get to this point right here, he's already had a conversation with you and he knows the expectations of what's required to develop that lot.
Yeah, it's the it's the expectations of an R one zone, all of the things that would apply to an R one zone. In a in a shoreline designated parcel, so we have talked about that.
Yeah, because you're not changing, I mean, it's going to be an R one because there's already residential houses there as it is right around that existing lot.
That's correct.
So so all these other items that were discussed here is actually a requirement for an R one zones.
Yes, any any R one zone in the shoreline designation would fall under all of these requirements.
And I believe the point that Vida is making of our current code really calls out for the stormwater. Plan the dated back to two thousand and five and she is correct. The new twenty nineteen supersedes all that because it's state law and that trumps everything.
And really by rights, it should read, it shouldn't even specify or should say per the most, the current. The current. Lost Western Washington Stormwater. That way, if when it changes, it automatically changes. It shouldn't reference a year.
Yeah, I will I will try to be bringing that code change back to you as a group to make a recommendation to the council to get that. Get that updated. Yeah, that's it's something that's need to be done. Vida and I have had several conversations about that very subject. Now that I see there's a direct conflict between our shoreline master program and the Ocean Shores Municipal Code, we will bring municipal code into the current. And and make reference.
And then the code should read the same way. It should be the most current. It does shouldn't. Be trapped, it's stuck in a particular year.
That's for, yes.
Do we have a motion to vote on this proposal? The second?
All second.
Okay, all in favor? Now we have the motion. Do I have votes on to approve this?
As long as he gets the wording right. So there's nothing to be circumvented around behind it.
Okay, four, okay, four to zero. The motion has passed. We will send it to the city council for consideration, as Donna said, it is on the agenda this evening. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So to move on to what we've got going here. After our last meeting, we received a piece of correspondence. From a citizen who and was included in our agenda. And it reads, I've been able to attend the planning commission meeting today. But it's come to my attention that your proposed zones agenda item. Might include a discussion of allowing trans rentals in residential zones. If this is true, I have several points to make. I am opposed to any transit rentals in R one through R five residential zones in the city. It invites investors to build homes, often small cottages, that are never intended to be occupied by residents. It brings many strangers into our neighborhoods, negatively impacting neighborhood character and safety. You never know your neighbors. Two, she says, this is not something that can be decided in planning commission meetings. The public must be informed and not just to planning commission agendas and hearings. You know how few members of the public attend the meetings, even aware of the meeting? Something this significant needs a town hall meeting before it goes to the city council. And lastly, she said in the past, this decision has been handled through advisory battles. It should go to the vote of the people. Thank you for your consideration. So as we have been discussing. All of the rezoning items that we have for months. This this was submitted to us and of course, we know that it's a long process. With public hearings and we do understand that we are just an advisory board. And any changes would have to go through the city council, so. I just wanted to share that I came in after our last meeting. So if we go to page twenty. We'll get back to where we had these discussions. And. So purpose and guiding principles, we haven't made any changes to this recently. Use the twenty twenty Ocean Shores Comprehensive Plan as a guide. Actually, as it has been written, we have been in changes there. We have made some changes is on page twenty one of challenges. We have added grandfathering of any rezoning decisions. As well as our discussions on, we'll have to come up with short term rentals definition. So any other questions on the challenges? As we discuss these for months. We just added those last two. I know we talked about outdated parking rules. Potentially restricting commercial development. And we talked about that. The parking requirements, if one of the hotels changes, Marshall, you'd say it goes from. One to one and a half.
If they do a change of use from transient rental less than thirty days to more than thirty days, then it increases. By a half a vehicle per unit.
Parking requirements.
Correct.
Any other comments about the challenges that we face in this process?
It's going to be a challenge. You're going to find some property owners over there that aren't going to tell you what they're doing.
Right, and and then we do have the grandfathering. What we talked about is what if there's a catastrophic event? At a residence that is currently zoned and now. Our and the zoning is changed. What are they able to do? Are they grandfathered in? What's the deal? We're going to have to give the bottom of that. And come up with a wording that we can send to the council. So that we have it on the books next to what happens to those folks in the case of a catastrophic event to their current resident. Marshall, do you have any thoughts on that?
One of the things that we in planning are pretty deliberate about is not using the term grandfathered in.
Well, let's let's change it.
We we have either legal nonconforming or or nonconforming directly.
Okay, so nonconforming as opposed to grandfather.
And and the two different, if it's either grandfathered, if it's grandfathered in, then we would call that legal nonconforming, meaning it doesn't. Doesn't. Comply with current code, but it did apply with code at the time that it was developed.
So I will make that change. And then short term rentals. Definition of that.
Well, I want to go back to the grandfather. I just want to make sure I understand something about, let me rephrase, legal nonconforming. I know we're in some of the other spots here, we were talking two years.
Yes.
What is? And I'm new to Washington. I in Michigan. Where I came from, I mean, once you, the law, the changes to grandfathering is pretty much, once you're grandfathered, you're grandfathered. And I don't want, are we, what? We're doing or what we're recommending, if the if there's state law or whatever that says differently. Or what the rules are in state law regarding quote grandfathering or legal nonconforming.
Well, that's a really interesting point that you bring. That's why I believe two years is a good choice for. To notify any rezoning changes. Letting whoever's impacted by that to know they've got to do something within two years. And and why is that? Well, there's political reasons for that. Not ocean. In this state, for example. If we vote on something as a public. And we just pick a pick something out of your your mind, if we vote on, then that's what we want. It's interesting under Washington state law. That after twenty four months. Our legislature can just change it. Just just change it without coming back to us. And so when you start talking about. Legal nonconforming issues. Twenty four months is 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 a good where, good place to start. Because that's kind of how the state operates. With their twenty four month rule in one week. So it it's consistent.
And I also think the intent of us putting that out there was not to say if you've got. Say, for example, a single family residence in what we're calling the downtown quarter right now. We're not saying you can no longer have your single family home there. It's going to apply mostly to lots that are currently vacant. To let those property owners know, you may have purchased this property with the intent of building a single family. But should the council approve the zoning change, you've got two years to kind of. Figure out what you're going to do with that and after that, then it will be no longer allowed to build a single family. So it gives them kind of two years to figure out, do we want to build a single family or not? And that's what's been mostly compromised. The challenge that we have is finding if there is an existing single family and there is a catastrophic incident. It burns down or whatever. What what do we do then? Do we allow them? Again, another twenty four months to figure out what to do with it, or do we just say, too bad? So I think that that's what we're struggling with a little bit there.
But I think what you just said, the point, I I think it, I think that's reasonable.
It is, and it's consistent, I think, yes.
I think the other thing I'd like to put under challenges, clearly it is, we have recognized it as because we've had. A member of our lovely town bring it to our attention or or iterate that we're not making the calls here. So I think that maybe we need to. Maybe in our minute, maybe on things that we publish, just to remind people, we're an advisory board. That's what we're doing. We're doing our homework. We're trying to do as much diligence as we can so that when we make a presentation to council, they have at least the most information that any other. Group has up there and that we're not changing anything that is completely up to council. So maybe we just have to. Advisory commission, just to iterate that a little bit more because that would be concerning versus, I mean, obviously, she took time to write her letter of. Of of concern and and I appreciate that.
Right. And it's correct. I mean, we just, we just advise.
We're giving the vote of honor.
Yeah, and we'll just send forward things to the mayor and the council. As we see, that doesn't mean that that's what's going to happen because obviously, they have to have four out of seven votes. And the mayor to agree, so. Yeah, we're an advisory.
And impartial advisory.
Right.
I go back to what you just said. You said that the council has to approve it and the mayor has to agree. Well, I mean, the mayor.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the mayor's going to bring it forward, right? Okay, yeah, because it's coming from the right, I missed it. Okay, so, yeah. The mayor's going to bring it forward.
He can veto.
He can veto. Yeah, he sure can. And a lot of the vetoes for buying, if we're honest, by not putting it on the agenda. Yeah, I mean.
Or or not having to clarify what we're on.
Yeah.
Understanding.
So there's there's ways. I mean, it is what it is, so. But if it gets to council, in order for it to pass, you need four of the seven on the on the A side. Anything else that I will change? To legal nonconforming and I'll add one of the challenges is that we're. Any any thoughts? We haven't changed anything in the zones for a while. We have sent for our proposals. To the mayor on changes to square footage. We haven't heard anything back on the agenda. And then, let's see. We made one one change, not recently though, just from our previous. On page twenty six about accessory structures, we've struck some things out. Where we took some time. In our last meeting and. Is on our definitions. On page, starting on page thirty eight. And this is, this is where it's going to get, takes a lot of time to get the right wording. And. I don't know, had a chance to go through and look at the definitions that we're talking about. And come up with anything that you'd like to add to them on. Dwelling, dwelling structures, multiples, dwelling on family, two family, dwelling. What we have in accessory unit, what we have discovered is the state has different terminology. And they don't have all those different categories. They got bad one. And so the question that we kind of threw out and never answered was, do we want to go back and look at? What the state calls these items and match or come into closer compliance with their wording? So. You know, short term rentals, is that what the state calls it? You know, dwelling, is that what the state calls it? What's the definitions? To see, doesn't matter. Marshall, does it matter if our definitions? Match what the state calls things or would that help in terms of confusion or?
Well, is. I can tell you that Roy and I have had conversations because an R three in the building code is the equivalent of an R one. In our Ocean Shores Municipal Code. When you get into. Um when you get into um, you know, Commonwealth structures or structures that would be designed for multiple occupancies. They don't, they don't line up with our codes. Um but I don't think that it's possible because we have more variations. We go clear up through R nine.
Yes.
Uh whereas the building code, I I know they've got uh an R one, two and three. And I think they're almost direct opposite of what our code is and how they get referenced. So Roy and I are really careful in our conversations about zoning designations. As far as my definition of short-term rentals, our Ocean Shores Municipal Code, uh Title thirteen and the utilities. Um basically defines um our our occupancy types as type one and type two. Uh one being less than thirty days and the other one being over thirty days. And so that's where that split is there. Whether whether you redefine what the short-term rental, what we call it. The municipal code on the utilities is wha- whatever you call that thing, there's gonna be two of them. One is more than thirty days and one is gonna be less than thirty days as it's defined in in that. So. And that applies to motels and apartments and uh motels being the less than thirty days and an apartment building being the more than thirty days. It changes the rates of the. Of the building. So as long as the definition uh is not in conflict with what the utility uh. Refers to as, you know, greater than or less than that thirty day period.
So do you see any benefit in going back through and trying to reword these? Uh definitions at all?
I think the community has a pretty good idea what a short-term rental is now because every time my phone rings, it's less than thirty days, what we tell them, so. And I know that's what Roy's telling him on the on the building side of things too, so. Um I don't know that un- unless there's a conflict with state code. Um I don't know that there's a huge benefit in calling a transient rental something other than a transient rental. I don't know if there's a na- I I don't personally have a negative connotation that goes along with a transient rental uh or short-term rental. Some people like short-term rental. I don't know. You know, I don't, I don't have a preference one way or another.
I think we call it one thing and the state calls the other. Yeah, so I think, no, does that matter? I don't know. I know it's been brought up in this forum that there is difference in that terminal.
Yeah.
I I think the only problem I have with some of the state definitions excluding short-term now is that. Oh, they they can get really convoluted and complicated really fast and 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 you really don't fly. I think they're trying to make them broad-based. But I I I I find them confusing personally. And I think I I'm a reasonable human being. If I'm confused, other people. You so it do. So I I would like to see this kind of shorter definitions. Currently, we've got dwelling, dwelling structure, dwelling multiple, dwelling one family, dwelling two family, the dwelling. It is designed for residential purposes. Um and then dwelling unit, dwelling unit, I think is important and I think that needs to stay in. But I think if we almost cut something to a dwelling structure. I guess because that's what it is and that a a a building proportion they're up to now exclusively for residential purposes and make into a single-family. And multiple family units, but not including hotel, hotel, of course, short-term now, just buying for overnight stays of thirty days or less. We could actually put that in there. So I'm thinking we just clean a lot of this.
Yeah, and I just wanna have the discussion before we spend, you know, a lot of effort. On definitions and then in the end, in the day, we look look at each other and say. They're fine with that, you know? I mean, it's it's good to have a discussion. Um is it harmful one? Doesn't make any sense in the past. Makes sense. To change it.
I think.
Except just for change sake.
Exactly. I think the only consideration we have should we decide we wanna change it is it's not just the definition that changes. Like that definition's all that and cut.
Exactly.
Right, so that that's the bigger issue is that is it so overwhelming now that? People don't get it or is it okay because we've got a whole lot of other cleanup to have to do, not just the definition?
Marshall, do these definitions cause you any any issues in conducting your business?
No, in in plan review, they're actually um kind of helpful. So if somebody's coming in trying to split a hair or whatever. I've got, you know, if if they're, you know, splitting hairs between an ADU and a second, you know, primary structure on a uh R one lot or whatever. Um when we say dwelling one family, this is what it means, you know? We have a clear definition for a accessory dwelling unit, those kind of things. Those are, I think those are helpful. And like Carrie said, they are scattered throughout the code, so um. And unless we have some sort of a conflict with any one of the definitions. Um we'll just wanna use caution in making a change and then look look the code over very carefully to make sure that there's not some sort of a negative. Uh impact by changing it.
Great. So I just, I I was looking at this since our last meeting, like, okay, are we making change for change sake? Um or is there some benefit to the change that we might make? And so if 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 it's not broken. It's one thing in my mind if we can make uh improvements. But if it's not broken and you're, if if it's not causing you conflict with doing your work. In support of the community, then. For now, I think we'll just. Leave it. Thoughts?
As as long as he's, he 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 has no problem, no no issues with how it's worded. Yeah, you like to make it simple for the general public, but it's, he's the one that has to make the decisions. I mean, if it aids him in any way, leave it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just don't wanna create a problem. A simple definition is best for most people and it works with me too, so.
Any reports or any other comments on definitions before we move on to planning commission members report? Any member have anything to report today? Any public comment in the room? Any public comments from afar?
Hi, no, no more comments. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks again for all the good work.
You're welcome.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, can you can you be okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I uh just wanna mention something. I I just saw that you're working on the the various municipal codes on zoning and I wanna mention something about. Uh uh B one, B two and B three and uh. Uh it you need to add the permissive use. To each one of those for uh food trucks. And what happened was the food truck ordinance was passed. I oh, probably eighteen months ago. And when they passed it, they they never updated the the uh permitted uses. And I I actually submitted to the to the previous mayor. An actual, I wrote the ordinance myself. It has to be be amended by an ordinance, just like what you guys are doing. And uh and I and nothing ever happened and I've given it to the city again. Uh not only, not not only did I write the ordinance, I also wrote the agenda item, cover sheet for that ordinance. And yet again, nothing has happened. Can I submit those to somebody on the planning commission? Because they ought to be there. They're permitted use and they were never added. When the uh food truck law was efforts and it's really a one-line addition to each of those three zoning codes. And my question, rather than waiting for the city to do something which will be nothing, never, I uh. Um can submit it to you and maybe you can consider just adding it to whatever you're doing. Would that be okay?
Please send it to me. Thank you.
Yeah, uh is yours, is your email address listed someplace?
Yes, it is on the city website.
Okay, I'll get it. I'll get it to you and uh anyhow, it's uh it really has to be done and and uh I gave it was just something that was left out and it takes an ordinance to do it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, our next meeting will be May twenty-eighth at two P M here at the Ocean Shores Library. The secretary for the next meeting will be Commissioner Bees. Um do I have a motion to adjourn?
You said May twenty-eight.
Yeah. Yeah, today. May twenty-eight, two P M here in Ocean Shores Library. We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second. Sorry, all in favor? Meeting adjourned, three P M.